Books, we're also putting more of a burden on some of our parents, right? So we think, well, there has and have not. If we don't have the technology at home, or we're not tech savvy. I mean, most parents can open up a book and kind of follow the log, but if you're not Google Docs, right, if you're not proficient with Google Docs, pumping out your kids could be, even if you have internet access, could be a real challenge for them. Do we have any idea, like, I know we're trying to go lean, but do we have any idea what the negative impact it would be for those that are already associated economically disadvantaged?
At Hampton Academy, all of our students get Chromebooks. And once that happened, we decided that we would make sure that we had instructional norms with the basic outlines of what those tools needed to be. Google Suite is one of those tools that our teachers all utilize throughout the building. Students have been very responsive of it. We don't have concerns at this point of students not being able to use the Google Suite of applications. And that will continue each year as we continue on how we implement technology. We have to have those norms to ensure those issues won't come up for learning.
We have run into very few cases of this, but we have had a handful of parents speak to us about this issue. And so what we've tried to do is teach children how to prioritize their homework time with us so that they're flipping what they need to do. They're doing the internet-based work with us, or staying after school to do that, and then taking the paper-based home. And that seems to have alleviated the pressures around those situations.
I was just gonna ask if anyone knew, how is access to internet among the towns, or in my selfish interest within Hampton? Is it equal?
I don't know where you are, how much you own that.
I mean, I understand how cable works, and numbers of addresses and all that jazz. I just, I don't know enough about how internet is delivered in an area like this to know. I just assume it, you know, I have it, I don't think about it. But I'm not sure that everybody gets it that way.
There are a number of areas, even if you know Scott County, Waldo County, that are underserved in terms of privacy. Whether it be cable, DSL, through FairPoint, or TDS.
And I don't have a specific point, so I'll try to keep this real short. But when we make understandable adjustments like what was mentioned, there could be other effects on extracurricular participation, or things like that. So, I just hope that everyone's keeping an eye on unintended consequences of well-intended adjustments.
Even if internet was provided for every student in all of our hands though, to Jason's point, to be underprivileged, you still have to pay for it. So if you're underprivileged and you can't afford it, maybe the students are better off. As long as we're making time for them to stay after school and use the internet, they're probably better off.
Right. I mean, this is absolutely a challenge. And it's also a shifting cost issue.
Well, that's assuming the homework is digital and can be made local. But I assume that some of the research requires internet access. It's just everyone's business today. In order to do the research you need, you have to have internet access. I guess, again, back to the flip side, I don't wanna rely too much on technology depending to fail us whenever we need it the most. The quality of the working material, I don't have kids in the higher grades. I only experience the two through four right now. And I can tell you that, you know, a third generation photocopy that doesn't have any color left is a little more difficult to follow than the original. And sometimes that color differentiation is very important. And that's part of the lesson playing around for those highlights. So as long as we're not cutting off our foot, despite ourselves here by saving 30,000 online items, that's 1,200 students that can't even discern who they're seeing. As soon as not that case in higher grade level, because in particular, the digital side, the quality would be perfectly there. So that does address some of the issues. Some of these are things that are just, you know, like the handouts we have. Rick has the colored version of this article, we have the black and white, and it's not the same. And, you know, that, I can see where, at each school, you know very well that the photocopy budget is probably the most contested one anywhere. And having a white one down here, so I can tell you that that's where the students get some of their material. So if that's the limiting factor, it's a pretty small item to look at. Or maybe another way of putting it out there.
I'd just like to say that this is our fourth year in the building. We started with iPads, now we have Chromebooks. I do an every-two-week grade check and meet with every, one of our student athletes that are not nearing our eligibility. So I'm dealing with kids that are failing classes and so on. I've never once heard a kid say, "Well, I didn't have the internet at home, so I couldn't use my Chromebook." I don't know if you've, but, I mean, I'm sure it happens, but I think it's pretty small. We have some kids that aren't allowed to bring their computer home with them. Parents don't want it home. They make the time to do their stuff that they need to do on the computer there, and then they have the supplements that go home with them. So I think we're pretty conscious about that in our decision-making.
You still have some tech.
And we still have some tech, anyway. It's not like we're eliminating all of our textbooks. I mean, we're making a reduction, so.
Do you have an idea what our photocopies cost, are for you?
About ninety-five thousand. Well, I'm gonna have me answer the question. We are, might just say what we're working on together.
Sure, we're gonna start looking at a system to kind of monitor and efficiently track, maybe limit some of that coverage. And we're looking at various solutions. But right now, we're looking at a trial basis. It'll be free to us, and probably implement it in the fall. See how we do compared to previous years, see what the savings are, and then move forward with that kind of knowledge from game from the trial.
You have a lot of talent, Chris, too?
Well, same with that, with our strategic planning, we've heard that. And to that point, I noticed that all these cuts, are there more cuts than what's on here? Because I noticed these are all, like, student impacting, but I don't think they're beyond student impacting. Are we looking at any other areas of our budget to save money or to adjust on programming for the kids?
This is one, this is it, right?
Okay.
Actually, I had some questions over the salary adjustments in terms of, if proposed on the other discussion.
Was that reflected in your thing?
Well, I mean, the salary adjustments are reflected, but there, I had some questions about.
Yeah, go ahead.
So we're removing the substitute teacher raise. This is a proposed raise?
It was proposed, yeah.
And is it doable via the budget process because it's, substitute teachers are not covered by the contract?
Yeah, we pay substitute, seventy dollars a day, and we have proposed to pay seventy-five dollars a day. So that we eliminated that in the budget.
Okay. The top line, the salary adjustments, the admin, LS and AL, reduction salary increases from three percent to two percent.
I just forgot.
Admin, LS and AL, I don't know all my.
Our administrative team was budgeted three percent raises in that we are going to have, in the budget, two percent raises for our administrative team. The central office is zero percent.
So this is.
LS and AL, higher issues for people in the central office. So in other words, the central office administrators have taken the zero percent raise. LS is Lisa Swift, and the endland asset is AL.
And so they're not taking the zero?
They're going from three to two, they're going from three to two also.
Right, because it's part of the contractual agreement that Rick is not getting a raise. So this is, but when you said central office is getting zero, I was wondering if you meant?
Just those, just those two individuals in the central, they're getting two percent raises.
As opposed to a three percent raise that was like prior? And they're not covered under collective bargaining agreement?
Yeah.
So this is done by the budget process? Okay. And we just heard talking about the seat. What is the superintendent's salary to seat?
Well, because we lower his salaries. And so whenever the superintendent decides to leave, if he decides to leave, we're trying to put some money back in because the salary that he's receiving right now is very, very low. And so that we're trying to.
Compared to? Is it compared to who?
Hiring somebody, because he's only been, I, how much are you paying? He's only getting paid seventy-five percent right now.
The current salary.
The current salary.
So you're getting paid seventy-five percent of the one twenty-five?
No. One fifty.
So we're getting paid one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And when you look at the list of superintendents over here, you're telling me these superintendents over here that are making under a hundred thousand dollars a year? Wouldn't, I don't understand who you're getting paid less than.
If you're gonna market for this school system, it's gonna cost, and we're finding hiring new administrators, which we have last two to three years, we have had to pay more than the existing individual in the position. The money that we have right now paying him, probably we need more when that position will be vacated. So that's seat money there to build up, not all at once. So we do hire somebody at higher salary, we have the money implemented so that we can do that.
But you're proposing to cut it?
It's gone.
So also with this, so the B athletics program that was put back in the budget from athletics, and then the B program away there, total sixteen thousand dollars, is that in the budget, or is that being brought out?
Yeah.
Can someone rationalize that for me?
What are you asking, Jason?
During the athletic committee, we did a lot of work, no? We did a lot of work and chose out of a number of different options to reinstate the ten thousand dollars cost for the B athletics of Greensboro.
So if you.
And then B athletics, two coaches is wagging, which is a total sixteen thousand. So I'm just wondering what the rationale was to remove those after putting in that sixteen thousand dollars?
Jason, you know, I think it's just one of those things, it just wasn't there when we're looking to. It just wasn't, it wasn't there already. Yeah, we did talk about putting in, but I think we were perceiving.
We voted, put it in. We voted. This vote is be put in the budget.
You, what you agreed on is that you felt like that's something that should come forward to the budget. But the budgeting process and what actually ends up in the budget and is included ultimately is the decision of the board.
Oh, yeah.
And that would've been, yeah, the board didn't vote.
Because I just wonder what the rationalization is, James. You get sixteen thousand dollars, and you think about the number of kids that play athletics. And we've heard for disciplinary reasons, what have you, you take those opportunities away, right? And you think about the goodwill that marketing with our community. And one of the things they said loud and clear was that we want this one. Think about sixteen thousand dollars compared to the thirty million dollar budget. I'm, I just wondered what the rationalization was. If it's sixteen thousand dollars in the man, then through the process, I guess it'd be my job to find something that's something that has this thirty million dollar budget.
I think, I think, I think the mission of the administrative team.
Who would you?
Where's that one?
Oh, it's a separate page that you have.
Things that were asked for it in the morning.
Yes, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars that we asked for. If you look at the, if you look at the original request, look at the cuts, what you mean.
It's not seventeen thousand, yeah. Seventeen thousand dollars. Can you think about, do you think that the rationale?
I think, here's the rationale. The rationale is that we lost a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. We added four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in new positions for special ed. We acknowledge that the teacher salaries need to be increased. There's about three hundred thousand dollars in the teacher salary increases. Our health insurance has increased, we have a seven percent. Hopefully, it comes in seven percent or less, seven percent, which is two hundred thousand. We have a one point two million dollar increase to the budget. However, the goal was that no one can lose their jobs. The goal was really programs that we were paying for were not eliminated. And then the third goal is that we were looking at the local increase of three fifty-two. We thought that was reasonable, we thought that was a good number to go into. And that was the mission of the administrative team to recommend to you. One seventy-seven thousand dollar loss, four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars repositioned special ed, that's not the other. We acknowledge the teacher salary needs an increase. Health insurance increase of two hundred thousand dollars, one point two million dollars increase. We didn't want no loser jobs, no program eliminations, and try and keep the local as low as possible. That was the goal, that's why.
Would it be possible to give this to all personnel that don't have student impact and their salaries?
I can give you everyone's, I can give you everybody, yeah. Non-teachers, non-teachers, custodians.
Yeah, just people that aren't, because really, like I said before, my, I thought coming in the budget process upon the main school, and this is my last time, I just kind of sat quietly and went through. But, you know, talks about as a board, we're supposed to provide the funding. So we come up with the overall budget, and then you kind of go from there. So it seems like a lot of this is a kind of, or, hey, I was kind of curious to find out how much would it actually cost to fund our schools? Because our responsibility is to provide the resources to fund our schools, and then have a duke out with these folks over here as far as how much of this can we actually do? So that's just one, kind of asking. It's just, it seems too bad that in this time, if you, I mean, you look at, yeah, we're not gonna put in a lot into programming, but, I mean, that's just gonna be a sour pill to swallow from some of the folks that we are gonna handle going forward, so it's kind of too senseless.
I'm just gonna say, this is the process basis. This year, I don't see, I mean, we have had years where we have significant red flags. And we have crowds of people here, particularly, you know, when we've had to cut programs, when we've had to cut a sport, when we've had to cut, you know, significant programs of advocacy around foreign language. And over the last, when you look at the budget, we haven't done this presentation this year. Luckily, because we're not cutting positions. You look at the positions that we've cut administratively, collaboratively, of teaching, it has been a long haul of cutting and reframing and reforming and reprioritizing so we could do things that are important, like support special ed, support gifted and talented, support foreign language. In this budget, the idea is that I'm getting from a year-long, or this administrative team pretty much starts to screw it soon as school starts, trying to figure out how to manage to the next year. They are the people in the buildings. We are not, as a board, gonna sit down and do line-by-line budget judgment. That's not our job, but it is our job as part of this process to review what we see or what's come forward, to question the work as we have in our committees. Why aren't we seeing that that we thought we said in our committees? That's our job. So this is a process. There will be other meetings. We invite the opportunity for the community to come and speak to the things they see missing, or they see that they don't see. So to that end, that is the budget process for the board. So it isn't tonight, and it's done. We will set another meeting, we're gonna make the opportunity for the public to come and ask questions about the budget. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but it isn't one and done here.
Oh, yeah, I don't know, I just wanted to, you know, get into the background, so I can bounce up what I saw and other kind of things, that would imagine.
Well, and I'm working here as well, I mean, the original request was eight hundred and thirty-six thousand. The cuts, whether filled or not, to three hundred and twenty-nine, the net remaining increase is five hundred thousand. If you look at the difference between that and what was added in fiscal year, so it's a two hundred and thirty-three thousand dollar increase in fiscal year, so that's the big one. So, I mean, at the end of the day, that's where we're headed with our, not just Hampton, it's Weber, Cleveland Board, and Chief Rogers. Actually, I came corrected, I texted my sister to make sure I didn't mistake something. They basically have a flat five percent unallocated fund balance across the entire town. Not seven, not ten. And everybody works for them, but it's only a single town school district, not multiple. And so basically, they're, which is very busy, I don't know about you, so, people on the road.
There's not a lot of it.
And they've done one up here. I see that ours is one percent of unallocated fund nets, which is close to our due.
And as Martha Point said, that's a very positive position compared to what we have been.
Compared to zero.
Yeah. Or even minus.
And we didn't think the budget for, as far as, like, the field, like, the field out here, is there anything we're gonna put away, like seat money, stuff like that? Is there anything in this one, or?
We have, we had, did pass something a few years ago where we could take gate receipts and put them into a cafe account, like, what's that?
And I just, and that goes back, not to believe the point, that goes back, when we think about athletics, we're obviously not gonna phase the field through our budget. And the folks that we would go to who pay for that field, we're telling athletics, "All right, well, is it?"
It's choices. You know, I mean, again, you know, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars from the state, I'm not. It is what it is, it is what it is. I mean, a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars would help us immensely.
We've been having some of these conversations, if they fund a special education both federally and state, we're not all the way we should.
True. You get penalized for being as good as you are, so.
Quick question on the funding formula, the eight point three mil.
Yes.
So we've actually gone down?
What they do is they.
Eight point six, is that valuations? Or do mill rate change, or what?
We look, take a look at the mill rates. I'm excuse me. The value, take a look at the valuation.
Maybe, oh, fourteen. Did I hear you on this?
No, no, that's a good question.
Asking a question a page behind you, sorry.
Okay, so Rob is queued us up for the next page.
Please explain page fourteen.
That's fine. Basically, our cost share formula for the local share is based on valuation. And what they've done, they've now do a three-year average of two thousand thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, but the valuation for fiscal year is seventeen. So these are three-year averages. And you can see handy, we're winning a point. Add up to that valuation, when they add up that valuation, the mill expectation is eight point three mils. You take that number, eight point three, and you're gonna see it. Right here. The mill expectation was higher, fifteen million dollars was lowered, lowered the mill expectation from eight point four four mils to eight point three mils. That's where the fifteen million dollars went for, that's in the smart board. So to take, the valuation in those communities is a mill expectation, and it's eight point three, it was eight point four four, and then multiply, and that's the money that's dedicated for the four communities towards the district on local assessment, and it's right here.
And to what do we explain the large change in price? Is that, is that due to the, the way the school separation occurred in the town, or?
What do you mean by the change?
It looks like it went from seventy-eight point nine million to seventy-eight million, so the valuation in ten miles, million dollars.
Yeah, that's based on real estate sales. And they average it, they average it.
People heard it was gonna be air carted last year on the school board.
So you'll see, like, you'll see. Rob, you see the cost sharing, Frank, which Frank will not have to pay as much because their valuation was lower. That's why.
Their pupil count, no?
Pupil count, no. So what they do is they take the valuations, they take the pupil count, let's go to the next page. They take the valuation and pupil count, and ours is about eighty points split. So here in this valuation is fifty-eight point seven percent of the total district. They have fifty-five point eight five students, you multiply that, times that equals that. You multiply that times twenty percent equals that, and the cost share is now fifty-eight point one four. It's basically unchanged. Basically unchanged because their enrollment's pretty steady, and also their valuation was pretty steady. That's how they determine it. They take the total valuation, they take the percentage, and then our, our cost share is based on eighty percent of the valuation and twenty percent pupil. And that's, and that's the part. Now, this, this number right here is fixed. This number is fixed. They take the valuation times the mill expectation of eight point three, eight point three mils, and that's what it comes up to be. These numbers right here are cost share. They're cost share, to that, to that percent. That's how that's done. Does that answer your question?
I'll talk to you afterwards. I understand that in general terms of the dockworks and the fixed part, I guess it's how they work together.
So on table six, or you can look at the assessments.
Table?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Eno, I just have a quick question on the numbers that you have. That's an average that you came up based on the numbers you've gotten?
The state gives us that. We don't do any calculation on the valuation, nothing. The state gives us that valuation.
Right, the seventeen one, you don't have the seventeen one yet, correct?
No, no, that's just, all that, all that indicates that, that's what we have to use with valuation for the sixteen, seventeen cost share. That all the valuations are from the state.
So Eno, I think, if you know, like, either it says three-year average, the years that are being averaged to decide seventeen dollars are thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen.
That's what I was asking, it's not a number that was given to you. You're figuring an average based on ones you've gotten in previous.
From the state.
From the state, we don't figure out anything. That's given the opposite.
You don't even have to draw it.
No, we don't do anything, just say, it's something.
I know that number's going down, that's why.
Unfortunately, I have to wait about two years.
Yeah, it's a two-year, and it is a three-year average.
Yeah, yeah. I know they're about a year, year or two behind, so.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Are we all set on table eight?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So with all the cost sharing and the local EPS commitment, you're looking at assessments sixty for Hammond, and six million one, six million three for next year, three point four. Number is one million thirteen, one million sixty, forty-six thousand dollars. Intercourse to go from two point five oh nine, two point five nine, three thousand dollar increase. Frank is going from eight hundred thousand to seventeen, it's a sixty thousand dollar increase. You can see that three thirty-two is three point three eight percent. That's the local assessment. Questions? This is our doubt debt, including of the doubt debt, it don't vary. We're including the total, the doubt debt, the assessments. I'm sorry. And then we're looking at gross budget variances that we've had since two thousand nine. Our proposed. Weighted doubt debt is one point nine eight. The local, our proposed is eight point three. We have by community, you can see in annual assessment, we had at Hampton. The average variance in nine years is two point six percent. Number, the average variance in nine years is five percent. The average variance in one quarter is two point nine percent. Local one in Franklin for the last three years is three point two percent. That equals the debt service.
And that's over a nine-year assessment for the first three districts and three, because that's where they analyze.
Correct. And the other, the other thing is very interesting. It lasts us first about the essential programs and services, where we call, again, the essential program services is not supposed to pay for a total K-12 comprehensive program. The past commissioner of education had noted that if you're four to five percent above EPS, Jim Ryan says, he's a pretty good financial guy, you should be, that is a good K-12 comprehensive program if you're about four to five percent above EPS. I happen to have a gentleman in my office today, and he was kind of curious about the numbers. And he's from Compton, but Compton is a good example of, just like ours, we're twenty-two, pretty close. You can see that they're about seven million above EPS, thirty percent. Then our test scores compared to Fount, Cape Elizabeth. It's pretty, pretty incredible when you see what they spend above the essential programs and services. And then you can see how we compare through the Bangor rural area, Herman, and you can see the other school systems.
Eno, I just, are we comparing apples to apples? Because Cape Elizabeth, Cape Elizabeth and Fount are lower received.
That is correct.
So wouldn't their local be hired?
Their local would be hired, but the essential program service number would not be hired.
Okay, so this is comparing Compton to spend over what?
The essential program is telling them.
Says they should, should spend.
These are all BLB numbers, these are all BLB.
So, if we, if we were comparable to Compton, thirty percent above EPS, our sixty-eight percent would go down, and our local share would be, gotta be more technical, so you'd have, you'd have more money in there, in the pot, so one of the reasons are, we're at sixty-eight percent is because the decision's made, one reason or another, that we haven't taken that, that piece, but it's also, these are, aren't all these also single town districts of Darness and Falmouth and Cape, they're all, so it's like Hannah compared to them, but not, they don't have the economic diversity that we have in Spott, right?
Yeah, it's different.
Looking at these.
Okay, so that's inclusive, our presentation is, again, in summary, um, and I think the question was asked, the administrative, you know, the serious look at, um, the numbers, pre-chock, that we lost three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in February. Thought we lost a hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, we added four hundred sixty thousand dollars to our lead positions, again, three hundred thousand dollars to the teacher salary, public trust, two hundred thousand. And we have no one losing their jobs, no program eliminations that we have existing, and the local, they've opened up two hundred fifty thousand dollars.
So, what, do you have any questions to, to answer? Our administration would.
I, I just wanted to commend and defer on this in the presentation for the first time, you know, the budget committee, um, this was very clear, I guess, I just want to restate that this takes into account to either the best of our abilities and the numbers provided by the state, it reflects the allocation of fifteen million dollars at the local state level, it reflects the anticipated like the bargaining, it reflects basically everything we've been talking about, school board level, various groups in the past six weeks. It is the safest, but it's no surprise that there are no surprises.
No, I, I, I will, I will commend this administrative team, um, again, the program, the programs, and I, I know it was commented that, can we have more, yeah, we could have more, offer like, um, it is what it is.
The only budget question mark that we really found significantly at this point is what will happen to insurance costs? That's still.
Don't know that yet.
Yeah, we don't know that, and that's always, that's a role of that.
But then next question.
Okay, this is the double bar meeting, we'll have that.
Excuse me.
Sure.
Where, I don't know what you can and can't comment on, but where, what is the status of the teacher negotiations, you know, you just said the only issue we're not sure of is the actual insurance increase.
Yeah, I should have touched that.
So, the question again, Dennis is what?
I was just curious when I didn't hear a comment about teacher, estimated teacher cost, put it that way.
Well, I mean, our next process fact-finding, obviously, will be key to give us a minister to that.
Yeah.
And I, that really is the other outstanding issue, I guess.
That's the next process in the configuration.
Thanks for the catch.
Our legal team, associated with the bargaining contract, negotiation.
Those are being paid out of FY sixteen.
This, this year. Hopefully, we don't have to use an exit.
Right.
I, uh, just would like to comment, I, I understand very clearly the, uh, some of the difficult decisions that needed to be made to get it to the three point three percent. Um, and I think we need to recognize that part of what we're all struggling with is the fact that the state is not honoring its commitments, so I think we just need to make that part of every meeting, certainly in the last seven years, um, on the municipal revenue sharing on the town side, it's dropped fifty-six percent, that's part of the pressure we're under. Uh, but I also do want to add a bit of context in terms of three point three percent, and the challenges that you've articulated, for seven budget years in a row, the town side has actually fallen every year, and it's gone down two point two percent over seven years. So, you can imagine the kind of challenge that's faced, you know, created on the town side. So, that's part of where our concern comes from, is that disparity between the two point two percent drop and the, you know, twenty-two percent increase over the same time period. It's reflected in the declining fund balance on the town side, uh, this is the first fiscal year in the town's history that we're, we do have to borrow to make our regular payments. So, I just wanted to, uh, I guess, introduce that for perspective, uh, at a meeting recently, Ema said, you know, is three point three, or is three percent reasonable? And it's, my response would be reasonable compared to what? In a vacuum, maybe, but when you look at what's going on, both on the government, town government side, but also in the communities, and what people are experiencing, and their household income, and their business income, that's the context that we're working in. So, I, I'm not passing judgment one way or the other, I just think it's very important perspective to understand, uh, seven years with no increase has created real pain on the town side, and there's lots of things that we're charged with doing by statute, by ordinance, by federal legislation, and by public expectation, that we don't have the resources to do.
But also, thank you all for your diligence, I know I asked a lot of questions, but hopefully no surprises, you probably agree in line with the questions asked, whatever topic, so, um, definitely appreciate all the work and the detail and the lot of, uh, the big N S one question, so, appreciate all your hard work.
Something, I just want to make a note, I just thought of it, and, and I'm gonna find out the answer tomorrow, but something in the next couple of years' calculations, um, I'm wondering if this homestead thing is gonna affect the valuation, which is going to change you guys' numbers. Because that homestead, I don't know if anybody knows how the homestead works.
Yeah.
Um, you get a ten thousand dollar rebate on your thing, um, which is ten thousand dollars worth of value, comes right up off the top of what we use to get our numbers and what the school uses. This year, another five thousand is gonna be added to that. No, it's five thousand this year and five thousand next year, so, in two years, instead of being ten thousand, it's gonna be twenty, of which we get reimbursed on the town side, half of that, so the taxpayers pay the other half, it's not free.
So, so, and just.
So, I'm wondering if it's gonna affect the valuation, so I'll call main revenue services tomorrow.
And just, uh, how that'll play out in hand, and we, we, our assessor projects we'll, we'll get about seventy thousand less next year because of the change, the statutory changes in the Homestead Act.
Did you suggest that the, the exemption is not used in the school evaluation numbers, but only?
I'm thinking it's not, because it comes right off the top of our numbers.
So, it'll take, because of the lag time, I think it'll take a couple of years before that shows up, but I think it's a, it's something to certainly take into account, so I think whatever information.
Because that's a big part of how you guys figure our assessments is through our, our valuation the state gives you.
Mm-hmm, which I asked us before, and now maybe it's, or I propose the, um, table one. The state, for the every dollar title money, if the state reduces, you know, they provide it. Which seems counterintuitive to a supplemental program, so it's basically.
It loses about twenty fifty thousand dollars.
Absolutely.
I think it loses. See, the other thing, the other thing that's in, the other thing that's in this budget that people. The other thing that people forget, that, uh, the other burden that we take, just like, you know, just like the municipalities, there is a local share, and I gotta find the number, I think it's four hundred sixty thousand dollars now that we have to pay for the state retirement. Now, it's a local share that.
That's a cost shift from the.
Cost shift from the state, you know, that's another one.
Right.
You know, I mean, I think it's.
But this, this one here is passed off as the taxpayers think they're getting something special when they're actually not.
Just shifting.
It's shifting the, the burden.
From the state.
They don't realize they're paying half of that, their taxes are, are, you know.
Years ago, we had nothing, and it's four hundred ninety-four thousand dollars now, and they say retirement isn't, isn't this budget, that is the shift.
Yeah.
Come.
Reminds me that bumper sticker about, um, the yard sales that we have to have keeps going.
How is it that they're seeing acceleration support for charter schools?
And that creates obstacles.
There's twenty million dollars in state coffers that pay for charter schools, that.
Used to be in G P A.
Used to be in G P A. Which is another factor.
Well, it's a double win, because the twenty million goes to pay for the charter schools, and then the districts lose the students that go to the charter schools, and then it loses that revenue.
A lot of moving parts, isn't there? For everybody.
Rob, do you have another question?
Just one last question, I can, and I think, um, Jason, you may have asked this five years ago, the cost per student. Notwithstanding the long-term debt from the others, the ninety, ninety-five hundred dollars, and our tuition is eight?
Yeah, our, our tuition student, it's usually under the high school, right?
Why is there, if, if, if the average, so.
Because that's set by the state, the amount you can charge your tuitional student, right? That's not set by us.
So, is it even likely that there's a school out there that has a cost per student that is less than you guys?
Yeah.
Because a lot of the ones I've got are, well, that's true, that's, with, with the longer debt factor, you have no way with the payment.
But it's someone really special education, so the more tuition students we get, further we stretch our resources, since we spend more than a thousand eight hundred on high school students, they pay us eight thousand, so each student, I mean, actually, our tuition students are stretching our.
Oh, I see, right.
Administrative more, so if you have thirty, if you have thirty-three tuition students, that times three is what, a hundred thousand dollars that we're picking up is Hannah, or Hannah, Newburgh, one of, for other students.
How, how many of our, of our tuition students are, are receiving special services? Probably very well. They could not. Yeah. So, we're probably.
As you said, there's only what, four or five?
Yeah.
But just the regular tuition students come here, pay eight thousand, the cost is eleven thousand eight hundred.
So, that's an average.
Boy, it's on that.
And that's being driven up by our students receiving special services.
So, from our recruiting scheme, I guess, it will be in everyone's best interest to put all of our, uh, engagements behind us, and we get back to the business of being the best school district in the area, all, all. Again, the recruiting potential is absolutely beneficial to everybody, every teacher, every student, every taxpayer, who's the greatest money in the whole of this district, otherwise wouldn't even be here. When you talk about the marketing position and getting a way out, but, to me, there's the, you, you talked about positions that don't interact with students, but I would argue that if you talk to my son, the person serving a bunch, interact, probably affects him more than a lot of things.
Right, and you're saying that is.
Or, or the person that, um,
What did you?
Recruits, uh, the, the other students, that helps reuse the cost and help allow us to pay for the things, so I think everybody in this district affects students to that point, they may not see them or talk to them that day, but, uh, every single employee of this district, like, maybe, maybe volunteering as well. Absolutely.
Especially that.
So, we are, um, closing in on eight o'clock, it's a pretty thorough, I mean, eight thirty. Yeah, I guess, yeah, we really need to have another meeting, so that, I mean, I don't think it seems like we have questions of the budget committee at this point, but, and others who just, we'd like to make sure there are opportunities to have the budget and find out, you know, people who, here, we've now presented the budget, to have an opportunity to potentially present another comment, so, shall we pick a date?
So, who does the protocol, who, that, this is the first I've seen this, when, who, who will see this from where?
It'll be on our website. It'll be on that site on.
Tomorrow will become public, so we can anticipate questions, comments from all sorts of cohorts. Procons, bylaw, add-in, take-out, uh, is that, is that a bit further customary for a budget, but, as it's, is busy.
Customary for what, I think, here is.
Excuse me, so what is the lay-on thing that, that, that process?
So, so depending on what the response is, we'll have at least one public meeting, uh, we'll, we should present it to the board on, at the April fifth, whatever that meeting is, the next week. Um, just so, we have the last few years actually presented the budget for the first time to the whole board, and this year, and did it, I mean, didn't work out that way, so we should do that, we should do a run-through with the board.
I will not be here next Wednesday.
All right, we'll figure it out, okay, and so we'll have at least one more public meeting, and depending on the response to that public meeting, we'll decide if we need to vote more for this, or not others, in order to provide enough public opportunity. And when we're at the point where we're satisfied, we've had the input, provided the opportunity by the committee, we'll vote to the, uh, however we stand to that, to the board.
And that could be mid-April, or?
Early, early, early May.
Early May, that's why we do this, is to leave that opportunity for public comment, maybe.
So, we know we need to vote the whole board over.
Right, I, I don't see having enough, you have school vacation week in there, we have, we have that second April meeting of the board, and so, man, we'll have to discuss it the next board meeting, so we have to really consider it the first.
And more endorsement and first, we're setting.
So, we're looking at two more, like, maybe, then one, one more to discuss, and, and not vote, or if we could possibly vote here.
I, you know, if nobody shows up, and there's no interest in the budget, and there's no questions, controversies, suggestions, or otherwise augmentations, then we could vote at the next budget committee meeting to move it, but we just want to make sure we leave the space, so.
What about timing with the collective arguing, creating, obviously, health insurance will know, and we.
I think, I think Dennis asked a good question, I think, what we have in, in the budget, what we have in the budget, um, I feel very comfortable that it will accommodate. When we settle the contract.
We're gonna have to vote on a budget regardless of, of the, how that, if that's not settled, we have to, we have everything ready to vote in early June, so that, you know, unless something happened between now and then, we have to move forward with the budget that we have, in order to hit the appropriate timeline for the, for the public, um, vote in June, whatever, the, the second week in June. And we have to have a public validation meeting the week before that, so really, by the end of May, regardless of what happens, we have to have a budget that we're moving forward.
Cindy and Angus, it's the second Tuesday of June this year, so is it different this year?
Yes.
Yeah, all right, so second Tuesday of June, backing up the, um, validation meeting usually to the Thursday before that, so we're looking at. Yes, yep, it seems like.
It's June fourteenth.
Oh, that, that is later than we, yeah, that is later.
Am I correct, is it June fourteenth?
June fourteenth, because our elections are the fourteenth, and our, Saturday, the eighteenth, so.
Okay, okay.
So, when does the board have to approve the budget in order to get?
And you have, you should have this budget approved either May fourth, May eleventh, or the latest, May eighteen.
Latest is May eighteen.
The latest, May eighteen.
So, did that help with the profit dependent back-up?
Totally did, yeah, I just, I, I, I'm probably have to ask the question, um, in executive session or at time, you know, basically, we're forced to move forward with an assumption whether, uh, it's an assumption that results in agreement or not, it is whether you vote on it, you do, and that's the budget. That's what happened, it happened. With or without contract, basically, we have to pass the budget.
Right, right.
With or without, with a contract, and we, and we change that, we're showing, we'll know the effect, unless something else could change that in the short term.
Right, in the short term, anything that, that, what would change this budget at this point, is any new information, uh, things will be put in front of this, if things were put in front of this budget, committees would consider whether it's in or out. things will be put in front of this, if things were put in front of this budget, maybe to consider, whether it's in or out. And then, you know, we go to the board, if there are things that somehow didn't happen, I mean, we have been, there are record board change in the budget, even after the budget committee's brought a budget forward, right? Remember, we have, that has happened. And as you know, in other years, last few years, in the public validation, there's been, there have been budget changes. So there's a long road to get to that number that is on the, it's long or short, depending on the year, to get to that number that's on the ballot. Depends on the year. So I'll have to set another meeting. Can you start, can you start? Okay.
So we would look, if you're looking at the week of, uh, the, 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 our voting is next week and the following week, or the next, uh, budget meeting?
How about Wednesday, thirteenth? Or about, do we have policy on the top? Do we have to be on the top? Do we need a Monday?
Does anybody have any objections to Monday, the eleventh? I have a problem with it. The eleventh is a national school board conference. Are you, are you? Smart people going to know. What about the, how's the fourteenth?
April fourteenth?
Going, going, gone. All right, fourteen. Chapter six. Sixty-three, right? No, no, no. No. But we don't have to go through the whole thing again.
Well, this is great, and we also don't have to.
Thank you.
Yeah. What do you mean? Oh, no.